All right, good evening, everybody. We've got a full agenda, so let's not waste any time, Mike. So I call this meeting of the Newburgh City Council, July 7, 2025, to order. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. councillor McBride?
Here.
Councillor Wheatley?
Here.
Councillor Yarno Halliman?
Here.
Councillor Kilburg?
Here.
Mayor Rosacker?
Here.
Councillor Turgisson?
Here.
Councillor Carmen?
Here.
Thank you.
Would you all please stand and join in? Pledge your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Mr. Worthy, would you please do the honour?
Yes, Honourable Mayor. And this is going to be a report on the happenings through June, and it's the narrative report. But before I set off on this journey, we did get notified by ODOT that because of their layoffs, which is estimated to be between five and six hundred people, they are not going to be doing any mowing or fire abatement, mowing control this summer. So I just wanted to let folks know that this means that, of course, the city is going to have to, if we see an area where we think there's a fire hazard, then we're going to have to pick that up. So that's something that we've received based upon their budget shortfall. And there were several state highways in the city that abut residential areas, and we're going to be taking care of that if we receive any complaints from the public. So library happenings, the summer reading programme for all ages got off to a cracking start. And Armadillo, the axolotl, was a huge hit with this year's summer reading mascot. Library's partnering with twenty businesses in their usual search and find escapades. The concrete work at the north doors is wrapping up, and in fact, it has now wrapped up since this report was filed, since the handrails have now been added. And now there's a safe way to get someone in a wheelchair out of there if there was a fire without lifting them bodily over a wall, which is the way it was before, and TVFNR didn't like that. And there's a picture of the ramp under construction. There is also the picture of the meeting room, which is undergoing repairs right now. And there is a picture of an axolotl, although the species and the genus of the animal are unknown to the city manager. The repairs are going on, on the way, and it's a multi-step process with carpet removal, sanding, concrete, expecting carpet installation in July, and the new carpet is thanks to Newburgh Library Friends and the Austin Family Foundation. So thank you very much for that. Capital engineering, the Stormwater Master Plan update, phase one, Keller completed phase one of the plan on June 16th. Phase one of the update included flow monitoring, identification of problem areas, evaluation of planning criteria. And phase two of the update will begin in July. It's important to note that as part of this process, we cross-trained our two GIS mapping experts. They're now also data collection officers, so they've been cross-trained on collecting flow numbers and speed counts, giving us that capability in-house, which is kind of cool for a city of our size. West Franklin Storm improvements, Keller has a hundred percent design, and we're currently looking for bids on the West Franklin Stormline. Groundwater treatment plant filter covers, an item that comes before you on the agenda this evening. The bid opening was held on May 22nd. Of the three interested parties, only one actually submitted a bid, and Keller and the city are coordinating with the contractor about project award. You'll be hearing more about that in just a minute. And for the month of June, finance did many, many things, including adopting the budgets, finalizing the supplemental budget, attending training about pairs, on the status of pairs and the pairs bond, began prepping for end of fiscal year work. That includes setting up all the new ledger numbers, et cetera, attending auditor-led trainings on the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, looking at pronouncements and any changes, so that Katie and her team can always stay on top of that stuff, as she always does. Community development, lots happening there, three pre-application meetings in June on a range of remodels, housing annexations, commercial storage. Vacation rental code update also coming before you this evening. Daycare expansion at North West Christian Church. The tangible fruits of system development charge reforms. And I couldn't be more delighted to announce that that is happening, so big community partnership there. And then building pyramids for twenty single-family houses in the Kalina approved, pending substantial completion of the infrastructure, and that's been moving along very well. City Recorder events, began working on a full records management policy and a long-awaited data retention plan. And actually, this is the very last thing that was mentioned in the, end of 2021, as the reforms the city needed to modernise. So that is the last internal administrative reform, and Rachel's taking care of that. The City Recorder attended North West Clerks Institute, completing the required training to become a certified municipal clerk and in record time. Onboarded a temporary employee to cover staff leave this summer for maternity, conducted training on Oregon Records Management System for our Human Resources Department, and launched a recruitment for our many, many vacancies on boards and committees. Human Resources coordinated with the police to hold the third lunch and learn, presented by Officer Levi Fergus on drug abuse and how to spot drugs and what to do about it, and also on traffic stops and things like that related to that. Helped hand out hot dogs at Public Works Day, attended the CIS employer benefit renewal, benefit advisory committee meeting, and on-boarded five new employees, one in GIS, some in maintenance, and I believe it was three in maintenance, bringing us almost back to full strength, and one in police. Who's a very young-looking officer, isn't he, chief? Community engagement, Public Works Day was a smashing success. The Public Works Week generated community engagement online and in person. Tough summer work continued to draw attention on our postings. And as you know, we started the Fulton Road repairs this very day. And a bit of news about that, early signs are that the Fulton Road repair is going to be under budget, because when they took the top layer of asphalt off, they're finding the sub-layer not as bad as they thought it was going to be. So I think there's going to be some savings over what the council approved. Community Engagement also launched an internal communication survey to get the temperature check on where our team culture is at. And we're working on some operational improvements, bringing in department heads and their teams to help engage staff and provide better customer service to our community. One immediate fruit of that survey was we've added a new thing in Teams, where anyone who is on a front desk can share news instantly if they hear something. So if, so as the people that are on our front desks can know immediately if there's a road repair or an accident or something that the public are asking about, and we're already feeling that that's getting information to move more quickly. So great work on that, Emily. IT completed a complete network assessment and is now working with a vendor to upgrade some of our infrastructure. They're working to change broadband vendors that has the potential to triple our bandwidth and accelerate our information. And Brittany's about to embark on getting her project management certification, which I'm delighted to hear she's pursuing that. Safety Committee, our safety committee, as you know, meets regularly. They train city hall safety rep on how to inspect city hall in the Annex Building, ordered and received trauma bleed kits for all sites, shelter-in-place supplies for city hall, CPR face masks for fleet, and safety committee inspection kits will be handed out at July committee meeting. It's early days, but we're also giving a facelift to our safety manual right now. So it's from 2016, it's one of the very last documents that hasn't been given a facelift, and we're going to bring it more up to date. Public Works Fleet completed thirty-five work orders, got the new Vector truck ready to go, working on getting the new engineering truck ready, waiting for some parts, and working on the new saw-cutting trailer setup for use, and that's to make it easier to cut through concrete. Some recent Public Works maintenance tasks, you can see them, they're splendid. Lots of connects, lots of street sweeping debris. And here are some pictures, putting down asphalt mastic ahead of the parade route streets. And of course, there'll be less mastic to put down this year because of all of the road improvements that we are doing. Gravel Street dust abatement just took place. Second Street water line repair, and this stuff happens all the time, of course, and repaired a water main air release valve, Highway 219 North College, and I actually don't know what that does. Russ, could you tell me what that thing is for?
So we do have high points in our water system mains, and we have entrained air that gets into our water system. So what this does is release the air out of our water lines without letting the water out.
Thank you, sir. Installed a new two-inch water tap in service on North College Street. And Public Works wastewater recent tasks, treated seventy point seven one six megagallons, averaged two point two eight one megagallons. Reused water to Chehalis Glen Golf Course is running. Lots of lab work, a new autodiler, which is an electronic part. Ordered parts for failed reuse pumps, hypochlorate tank work. Please do not flush your underwear down the toilet. It does not do anything for our sanitary system. Apparently, they wanted to tell me that. And repaired a field chlorine analyser, and electricians resolved some wiring issues on a reuse pump. And water, recent events, you can see the production numbers there. Non-potable at one point four eight megagallons. Removed a power service from well four, as you know, that's the one that was decommissioned. Acid-washed hypochlorate generator, found two failing cells, new cells have been ordered. And of course, as council knows, we make that stuff by using precursor supplies, so we don't have to have live chlorine tanks. That's a health and safety change we made a few years ago, because chlorine, of course, is a deadly poison if there's a leak. Cleaned the settling basin and installed a new Scanda pack at Oaknall Booster Station. Programmed it to accept the larger pump for future needs. And in the Police Department, Evidence Prep Room was updated with new cabinets and countertops, giving a lot more storage space. Officer Max Field was sworn in as our most recent officer, that's the young bloke I was alluding to earlier. And he will be at the academy for four months before he comes back to finish training with field training officers. And we ended out shift rotation with our summer barbecue, which was a big hit. And Officer Madonna and Mabel Rush, Mabel Rush had students dressed up, telling what they wanted to be when they grew up, and this kid was pretty clear about his intentions. And in celebration of the two hundred and fiftieth birthday of the army, Officer Fauch brought a bloody big sword to cut the cake, as is the tradition. And here's the chief and Officer Max Field at the swearing-in. Crikey, that's a young-looking lad. So that is it for our June events. As you can see, taxpayers, dollars, hard at work as usual. Any questions, folks?
Go ahead, Mike.
So at the IT highlights, Brittany, she's about to get the project management certification. So what's going to be her requirements or her new job title, or what is she going to be doing with that certification?
If she is successful in completing the steps to get this PMP certification, then she will move on to a different job description, and there will be a slight pay increase commensurate with those greater responsibilities. And she's been really leaning into more project management, and I think it's beyond time that we're going to reward that.
Chief Cosmic, those, uh, thanks belong to you and your department, your men. And, uh, they're not the only people in this city that appreciate the fact that we've figured out how to get that house closed up. And so, thank you.
I think this is the only time I would disagree with the mayor. I think it was a very good team effort from you guys and, uh, James's law firm, and then our, our officers. So I think it was a really good team approach and collaboration. I'm only sorry that it took this long to get it done.
So the next item on our agenda is continued business. The Newburgh Urban Renewal Agency Intergovernmental Agreement for River Street Repair.
So the resolution that lies before us is one seeking authorisation from the Mayor and City Council to execute a new intergovernmental agreement between the city and NURA to allow for the development of a financing instrument so as to be able to begin the River Street work. The executive summary, in previous council and budget sessions, the River Street capital improvement project was examined. The CM and Finance Director indicated that at the current rate of tax increment funding growth, slightly less than four hundred and fifty thousand per year, it would be at least a decade before NURA projects like River Street Improvement could begin. The option of continuing to do spot repairs on River Street was considered previously, and the consensus at that time from council seemed to be that the interim work might be financially wasteful. This was because we would be spending grind-and-inlay tough dollars on a street that ultimately would need to be fully improved. The execution of the attached IGA prepared by my colleague would facilitate work on River Street with dispatch. The funding model would have the city secure the debt, but would have NURA pay for the debt with tax increment financing. The city would also dedicate SDC revenue to the project to create a maximum possible expenditure of twelve point six million. Now, I do not believe that it will cost that much to do the sections that we're discussing, but that would be the maximum amount of the project. In fact, with a good clever cross-section, I suspect that we can make this one far more affordable. The fiscal impact, the attached IGA would generate up to six million of a total of twelve point six million towards a complete River Street rebuild. The debt would be paid by the urban redevelopment district and not with Newburgh City transportation dollars. The city has the financial muscle in the form of SDC revenue to power its share of the whole. Using our established principles of fiscal conservatism, the initial design work would be paid for with SDCs, dollars, and the debt only taken out when we need to begin construction, so as to strategically choose the right moment to strike on the debt to get the best possible rate. Council goals, clearly this ties into the Newburgh infrastructure, roads, water, and city employees in good repair goal. For all of these reasons, staff recommends the approval of the attached resolution so as to facilitate bond financing to improve sections of River Street in the near term rather than in the future. Are there any questions?
Robert?
Yeah, if this is passed, when will this work begin?
If this item is passed, and then the next item on the agenda, which is related to this item, because they're stacked chronologically, work will begin tomorrow morning on design. So we've already lined all the pieces up, and the first stages will be doing a thorough design review, scoping. Well, actually, I'm, I'm stealing the next section's thunder, so there, we, we've already figured out what the first steps will be. We have to not have this go the way Elliot Road did. We need to do more investigation work on the front end and less on the back.
So there's no question, would somebody like to make a motion?
I move that we, uh, pass resolution twenty twenty-five dash three nine seven nine to facilitate the improvement of River Street in the near term.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded to pass resolution number twenty twenty-five dash three nine seven nine. Is there any more discussion? All in favour signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the aforementioned item, to approve Keller Engineering to initiate the River Street scoping work.
Thank you, Honourable Mayor and Council. This item will initiate necessary design work to try to make the River Street project as affordable as it possibly can be. The executive summary, River Street is a not long-neglected street and in poor condition. It also has inconsistent road width, which means it changes through the course of the road. The street is critical for the development of the former mill state. It gives access to the riverfront, and the development of the street is also a prerequisite to future developments in that area. With the adoption of this task order, whose value is two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, the following things will happen and more. The entire length of River Street will be scoped, including required traffic counts. Examinations will be made for geotechnical considerations. A possible multimodal path approach will be used, trying to meet straight law while reducing the width of the road so as to keep the project as low a budget as it can. There will be an option considered to see if River Street could at least in part become a one-way system. There will be geotechnical drilling to assess if the subsurface conditions are sound and to determine if there really still are concrete slabs under there, which we believe there are, which could make the road less expensive. So lots of drilling will happen. We will also use ground penetrating radar to further scope below-grade conditions. We will use these to verify the location of franchise lines to avoid the expensive and embarrassing mistakes that we saw on Elliot Road, where franchise lines were found at the tip of a bulldozer. We will work with PGE on electricity relocation options to try to keep it affordable. We will provide alternative cross-section ideas, which we will bring to the community and council to try to save on construction dollars. We will consider right-of-way considerations to try to minimise the purchase of private land for this development, which also inflated the cost of Elliot Road. And we will develop elements for public engagement around these issues. This will also lead to the creation of detailed cost estimates, from which you will then have a better idea of the real costs. And we will not take out any debt until after we have completed these steps. Fiscal impact, this first phase of the River Street project will cost the city two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in, in transportation SDCs. The city has been saving for just this eventuality. Currently, there is seven point five millions in reserve for major road projects, and this will be used partly to power River Street in the following years. Unlike neighbouring communities, we never waste SDC dollars on frivolous projects. Council goals, goalie, ensure Newburgh infrastructure, roads, water, city employees are in good repair and supply. This also connects to gold too, because it may help attract employment opportunities for leisure and the industrial sector. Identify industrial land and attract employers to encourage family wage jobs. And for all of these reasons, staff recommends that after the completion of an IGA between NURA and the city of Newburgh, that the city moves with dispatch to the next stage. And that we are seeking a motion to approve the Keller task order, which was attached to this part of the meeting. Thank you kindly. If there are any questions, I'll be delighted to answer them, and if they get over my head.
I was hoping maybe Mr. Smith could tell me, is this really going to take ten months? Or is there an opportunity that it can happen sooner? I, I just don't know the scope of your work.
I wish it could. I, I think ten months is a conservative estimate, uh, but at this point, that's what we're anticipating. So it's, there's a lot of things that need to be staggered in order to move this design forward. And so it's, a lot of things can't happen concurrently. So ten months is about what we're estimating.
I can't believe we brought him up here for one question. I can't believe we brought him up here for one question. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move to approve Keller Task Order twenty twenty-five zero six twenty-four to initiate scoping River Street.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve Keller Task Order twenty twenty-five dash oh six dash two four. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Thank you, it passes unanimously. Where are you going? Aren't you on the next one too?
I am, I didn't bring up my documents.
So now we're going to talk about the water treatment plant basin cover project.
That might be easier, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, James. Thank you, James. Okay, here we go, the one that we're not so delighted about. So, as you know, what should I be, what should I say about this? I won't say spurious science, unreliable science, no, I won't say that. And based upon a requirement that was placed upon us, as you know, we have got to put a cover over the basins that are at the water plant. Now, we've had several extensions to this over time. We were originally planning to attempt to build a water plant sooner than later until the cost became unrealistic and the project was canceled. For many years, the city has worked with this unfunded mandate from Oregon D E Q, an unfunded mandate which has hit many cities across the state to cover these basins and similar facilities statewide. The matter was introduced to council previously during the C I P presentation for B I, B Y twenty-five twenty-seven. And to summarize greatly, here are some of the milestones that have already occurred. In March of twenty twenty, the city of Newburgh responded to the D E Q mandate that we cover the water basins. And at that time, we indicated that we needed more time to study alternatives, and D E Q accepted this. On December twenty-second twenty-one, we indicated to D E Q that we had completed interim measures such as bird scavers and noises to keep rodents away. And at that time, we indicated that we needed more time to study alternatives, and D E Q accepted this. In December of twenty-one, we indicated to D E Q that we had completed those measures, and we're weighing up the benefits of a new water plant.
Excuse me, was it the D E Q or was this the Oregon Health Department?
It's, it's the Oregon Health Authority, yes, sir.
I apologize, this should have been O H A all the way through. I wrote all these at the same time, I'm sorry. So the agency suggested to us that we would have to continue with that unless we're building a water plant in the near term. And indeed, we were unable to do so. The budget for the water plant, which began at seventeen million, expanded to twenty-one point five and then rose to thirty-five, causing this to be canceled as unsustainable. When that was canceled in December of twenty-three, this basically began the clock counting again for when we would have to cover the basins. On May, the city, the city canceled that. We met their shot clock by having designs ready that went to bid on April of twenty-five. May twenty-second, the city opened the bids and received only one bid for the construction work, which other companies that were looking at it stated was complicated and an incon, non-conventional building, requiring by mandate extractor fans and some other pieces of equipment. So that's what lay before us. After many site visits and some really good negotiating, we were able to propose some value engineering reductions that Keller did for us to bring the cost down a little bit. And I do apologize, it should say Oregon Health Department, not D E Q, my bad. If the city does not build the covers to match the specifications, they have the authority to put us on a permanent boil water notice. They also have the ability to fine us a thousand dollars a day, should we not do this action. The fiscal impact, given the value engineering that Keller was able to press home on the company, downgrading some of the materials and doing other changes that Mr. Smith can explain more, more than I, we were able to get the price to nine hundred and eleven thousand eight fifty. The value engineered bid is still a hundred and sixty-one thousand more than we had anticipated. However, we can balance this against the fact that other C I P projects during the last year have come in three hundred thousand dollars under cost net. So in the world of C I P, we're still a bit ahead for this year. And I think that concludes my remarks, and if you'd like to add anything, sir, maybe if there's any engineering questions.
Not an engineering question, but with the C I Ps that we were submitted, I think we submitted through Salinas's office, is that right? Are, do, are those going to be able to roll over? Well, my understanding is they roll over to twenty twenty-six. So will we still be able to qualify since we're going to be starting before that time period, or what's the deal with that?
Yes, given that those items were put on hold, they're still live items, and they would still be available to us if the federal funds are released to make up some of the cost for this. So it could net out that we build this for two or three hundred thousand dollars if that pans out.
If there's no more questions, would somebody make a motion, please?
I move that we approve Cedar Mill Construction LLC's contract for nine hundred and eleven, eight hundred and fifty thousand to build covering structures over our water basins at the water treatment plant. Second that.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the Cedar Mill Construction LLC's contract for nine hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars to build covering structures over our water basins at the water treatment plant. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Passes unanimously. Yes, sir.
Rachel, could you enter into the record that the city manager is apologetic about his typo in this document? I was doing all of these at the same time.
Certainly.
Rachel, then, uh, this is a public hearing, is this a sec, we don't need the legislative because we have another reading yet, right? That's an idea.
Thank you.
Let's take a short recess. All right, let's go ahead and continue. Vacation rentals.
All right, are we good, Rachel?
We're good to go.
All right, so good evening, councilors, my name's James Dingwall, one of the planners. And tonight, we're going to be taking a look at the vacation rental. We might have to read some language.
So I know that there's an opportunity for council, should it choose to do so, to take some legislative action today with respect to the, to the vacation rental home piece or short-term rentals ordinance, if you will. So should we go ahead, I would recommend we go ahead and open up the legislative hearing, run through the script for that. And if council chooses not to take action today, that's okay, we can, we don't have to have a vote, but at least you've gone through the procedural components of commencing the, the hearing.
Okay, so I'm going to open up a legislative hearing for the short-term rental program. I call this meeting order. At this point, declaration of conflicts of interest or absentations, I will begin. I was a sometimes member of the ad hoc committee that put this together. And so I've had many discussions with these groups, and that's it. Does anybody else have anything to declare? Peggy?
I wasn't sure it was necessary, but I was a member of that ad hoc committee, vice chair, in fact.
I was also on the committee chair.
So it is time for our staff report. All right, so tonight, we're looking at D C A twenty-four three, a ordinance to amend the city's vacation rental home policy. Staff's recommendation is to consider the staff report, public testimony and the findings to deliberate, and then based on the deliberation to consider adopting ordinance number twenty twenty-five, twenty-nine and thirty-five, amending the Newburgh Municipal Code Title Three Revenue and Finance and Title Fifteen Development Code with updates the city's vacation rental home policy. To go over the process that we've gone through, in March of last year, council directed staff to consider updating the vacation, vacation rental home policies. And in August, council held a community listening session. In November and December, staff held public engagement events. In April of this year, a personal acknowledgement plan amendment, or Papa Notice, was filed with the Department of Planning, Conservation and Development. In April, the planning commission held a work session on proposed code language. A notice was published in the Newburgh Graphic for their public hearing to make a recommendation to city council in planning commission recommendation twenty twenty-five three ninety-nine. And then in June, the council held a work session to receive that recommendation and discuss the proposed language. And tonight is the first hearing with possible more to continue. To go over again, the overall project objectives, first, growing tourism responsibly, leveraging opportunities at the city to foster growth in tourism while minimizing impacts and conflicts between the residents and visitors. Second, improving compliance rates, implementing operational changes and updating local regulations to improve compliance for permitting, business licensing and T L T collection. And third, improving knowledge of vacation rental home operations and remaining responsive to community needs relating to them. The proposed development code of amendments are in Title Three Revenue and Finance, specifically three ten relating to transient lodging tax, Title Fifteen, the development code, fifteen three oh five, fifteen four forty, which is the offshoot parking standards, and then fifteen four forty-five, the special use standards, specifically Article Seven relating to vacation rental homes. Starting with Title Three, there are two definitions that are helpful as we look at the proposed change. First being an agent, which includes, but it's not limited to, an online or internet-based booking service, such as Airbnb or Verbo. And the second is an operator, so the person who's a proprietor or of a hotel or motel, and where the operator performs those functions through an agent, that agent has the same duties. So the operator is a owner and the agent is more the management-type Airbnb company. So the proposed change in three ten includes that where an agent such as Airbnb is used for the advertisement, management or booking of a vacation rental home, the agent shall collect the applicable transient lodging tax. And where no agent is used, the operator shall continue to collect T L T. In the operator's duty section, it also adds the agent where, where applicable. And then finally, in the returns, adds that where an agent is used for the advertisement management or booking of a vacation rental home, that agent shall file the applicable T L T return. And then also that the operator shall file a form confirming submission by the agent or that no tax was collected. Moving on to Title Fifteen, the vacation rental home use is proposed to be shifted to a special use in the R one and R two zones. This would require a type-two special use permit reviewed by staff and issued by the director. Public notice would still be required to be posted on site and mailed to properties within five hundred feet. And the decision could be appealed to the planning commission, then the city council, then L U A. And approval will be, will be based on the special use standards and the type-two process. Next, the offshoot parking standards are being updated to require one space for every two bedrooms, the minimum of two spaces in the vacation rental home with special use standards. The next change is in the special use standards themselves, adding the two percent cap on the number of vacation rental homes in the city. It requires that the number of vacation rental homes permitted shall not exceed two percent of the total number of households existing in the city based on data published annually by the Community Development Department, and that the director shall annually, annually publish the number of available vacation rental homes permitted and the number of available licenses. Should the cap be reached, no new vacation rental homes shall be issued until equal number become inactive or terminated. The proposed language includes that the permit is considered inactive if a business license for the vacation rental home is not renewed within a one year of its expiration to give a window for permit holders who may have a period of time of not renting to start again, and just requires that they have renewed their business licenses within the year. Section C looks at the grandfathering and amortization of existing, of existing permit holders. First, it notes that all vacation rental homes in operation prior to October thirteenth, twenty thirteen, and not meeting the development standards currently in place or operating in a structure other than a single-family dwelling, they continue operating as illegal non-conforming use and are grandfathered in. October thirteenth, twenty thirteen was when the current vacation rental home standards were adopted and became effective. The second section addresses the planning commission's recommendation and then your addition to change to the parking requirements and allows vacation rental homes approved between October thirteenth, twenty thirteen and the effective date of this policy to continue operating with their approved two parking spaces. So grandfathers them in with those two spaces for this change. These grandfather provisions will be subject to the city's current non-conforming use standards, and becoming inactive would constitute a termination of the non-conforming use, and an operator will be required to reapply and meet all the, the then-current standards. All of the vacation rental homes operating would need to come into compliance with registration, land use, business license and T L T. The proposed language is for ninety days to apply and one year to receive approval. These dates are based off of the projected effective date from tonight and can be updated based on the actual dates following adoption. So to summarize, there are three buckets for potential impacts, the first being grandfathering. If you were operating prior to the current code, you could continue operating in a different structure type, for example. And then with the parking changes, you would be able to continue operating with two spaces. If you have been operating between October thirteenth, twenty thirteen and now, need to come into compliance with the current standards as if you came into the planning department and applied and amortize any non-informant, non-conforming elements. And then finally, all operators, regardless of when they began operating, need to come into compliance with registration, land use, business license and T L T. The next proposed change includes clarifying the three parts that make up registration, being the land use planning, business license and T L T registration. The section also includes the proposed penalty. Upon being noted, notified that a vacation rental is operating without registration, the owner shall apply to register within forty-five days and cease operation until it has been obtained. Violations of this section subject to a penalty not to exceed two thousand dollars for the first offense and five thousand dollars for each additional offense. This structure mirrors penalties found in the building section of the municipal code, and each confirmed booking following the forty-five-day notice period shall constitute a separate violation. Moving on to the special use standards, the recommend, the language includes the change setting the baseline of two parking spaces, which for a larger rental, five or six bedrooms or seven or eight, would be three or four, but the baseline is set at two. The next proposed change is the requirement to send annual good neighbor notices to properties within five hundred feet, which would be verified with an affidavit at the business license renewal process. Then subsection F includes the change from in some permits running with the land to running with the applicant. And we spoke a bit with James and Legal today, and there are a couple of changes for And there are a couple of changes for council's consideration. The first being at the work session, we had a discussion about existing existing conditional use permits. Currently running with the land and being able to be transferred. And if council would like to see code language that limited that ability. So that at some point in the future, all permits would would run with the applicant. Planning staff developed language where a conditional use permit for vacation rental home approvals issued prior to August sixth or the effective date. May transfer to one subsequent owner or contract purchaser and therefore and thereafter would be subjects to those ownership requirements, attempting to allow conditional use permit holders who expect to be able to sell an opportunity to realize that expectation. And then once that occurs, the next permit holder would be in the new running with the applicant framework. If council would like to continue considering that, I think we'd like to have a little bit of additional time with Legal to kind of workshop that language and kind of finalize that. And so would request considering to a second hearing or later meeting. And so, yes, James, do you have anything to add on that point?
No, I think I think you summarized it well, James. I think there are, when it comes to the conditional use permits and the the ability to transfer them, I guess there's there are a couple of things we're looking for, some feedback or confirmation or guidance from council. One is is the, from a conceptual standpoint, the approach that's being proposed here where there's kind of one future transfer and that being kind of a line in the sand, then after that one transfer, the essential essentially prohibition on subsequent transfers kicks into effect. Or has a spring effect in nature, whether that is consistent with the the intent and the will of council. And then the the second piece of that is is more language or wordsmithing to to not only capture that, but also make sure that or confirm that. It synthesizes with some of the other areas in the code that deal with conditional use permitting and in the transferability of that, making sure that this kind of stands stands alone on its own two feet. So those are the kind of the two pieces. So if we if council says okay to to part one, if you will, then part two, the request is that we have the ability to do some a little bit more wordsmithing with the second exception and bring it back to council.
And then the other change for the section, so the provision provides that the land use approval is in the name of the property owners and it's not transferable, subject to exceptions for death or survivorship. And there's been some updated language from James combining this paragraph into the the previous F. So I think we have it printed out if you'd like to look at it, but the big picture is kind of making it not changing any of the exceptions that are outlined as far as spouse or child or the ability to put it into an LLC while the transfer lives, but more consolidating that language into more
Yeah, that's with respect to paragraph Fs, so as as council knows in the proposed revisions, there are there are kind of two exceptions, if you will, from this broad brush prohibition on transfer of of land use approvals. The first exception includes a definition of sale and transfer, what constitutes a sale and transfer. We're proposing that that definition be captured in the initial paragraph of section of section F. So that it applies to, you know, the exception as well as the prohibition. So that's a a drafting piece that we're submitting. And I will pass the language out that we're suggesting to council so you have it. And if council did choose to proceed with voting on the ordinance without that second exception, if you wanted to proceed tonight and approve it tonight. I would suggest that this paragraph F be kind of read into the record as an amendment, if you will, to capture that that change. But in addition to defining sale or transfer in the in the first paragraph to capture the not only the prohibition, but also the exception. It also carves out of what constitutes a sale or transfer certain actions, which James already summarized. So, you know, there's a right of survivorship and a property passes to a spouse, for example, that's not deemed a sale or transfer. If there's a transfer of ownership to an entity whose sole member is the individual that owned it beforehand. So if I own a piece of property and I transfer to a single member LLC where I am the sole member, that would not constitute a sale or transfer. Causing the loss of that of that approval. So the 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 intent behind this consolidation is to is to kind of draft it in a way so the sale and transfer applies broadly to this section. But then also creates the carve outs that we understand council wants to allow for a narrow number of transactions that could occur without losing those those rights.
So we're looking for direction on that first policy piece about if council would like to proceed with that one time sale or another option. And if council would like to do that, a possible kind of extension in the adoption timeline to update that language. If council does not want to pursue that shift for the existing conditional use permits. Amending the first section as James has proposed. And then adopting it tonight without that second provision about existing permits being able to be sold one time. That makes sense.
So just makes sure I'm clear. This is the proposed language. If we accept this tonight with this language, then we can move forward. If we do anything else, do we have to come back for, is that correct?
It's it's a little bit different. So there's the the decision tree here is first, does council want to proceed with the kind of what I'll call the, I've I've been calling it the one time exception or the one time burn off where there's there's a sale or transfer that is to a third party, for example, that can happen one time. And then after that one time, any subsequent transfers are are subject to the prohibition. If council wants, if the answer to that in terms of keeping that is yes, then the recommendation would be to not take action on the ordinance tonight. Because we'd like to make some some tweaks to that to that language. If the answer to that is no, we we don't want to keep that and that second exception, that one time exception, you know, we'll let that go. Then the recommendation would be to proceed with, you you can proceed with making a decision on the ordinance, but we would recommend this change to paragraph F be captured in that ordinance. That is that would be adopted tonight if council chooses to do so.
So the the last couple of policy changes are adding the local manager that the owner or designated property manager shall be located within forty miles of the of the home. And then finally, Exhibit A two of the ordinance includes the findings for both for both the Oregon statewide land use goals and the Newburgh comprehensive plan, goals and policies. Of note are goals one, two and AMB, citizen involvement and land use planning, which include which included the public hearings at the planning commission and city council, the ad hoc committee, community listening sessions and outreach events. The city's type four legislative hearings process and the post acknowledgement plan amendment process through the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And also goals nine slash H and goals ten slash I regarding the economy and housing supported through the proposed policy changes promoting the city's tourism industry while developing noticing policies and the cap to limit that growth as the city grows, reserve housing for housing purposes and increasing transparency with neighbors and registration monitoring. And that is all.
All right, James, we have one public comment. So Robert Suppy.
Good evening, welcome. Thought you'd be shocked if I didn't show up. Good evening, my name is Robert Suppy. I would like to address three issues tonight. The absence of a density cap, the change from a conditional use to a special use and the requirement for a nearby property manager. What makes a vibrant neighborhood? Is it made up of houses and streets? I don't think so. I see it as consisting of the people who live in those houses. Neighbors get to know each other, converse with each other, help each other, watch out for each other and generally make the neighborhood a better place. I don't know if this is a fair description of the neighborhoods that any of you live in, but it seems to apply very well to my neighborhood around the cultural center. Vacation rentals are typically occupied less than half of the dates in a year. The guests stay for a few days and then they are gone. People who stay a few days in houses that are regularly vacant don't contribute to a neighborhood. That doesn't mean that vacation rentals are a bad thing, just that they don't add to the character of a great neighborhood. If there is a small number of them, then it's not a problem. If they become too dense in an area, they can seriously impact the neighborhood. My fear is that we're moving in that direction in this neighborhood. We have already, we already have quite a few, as you have seen in the heat map that staff provided you, I think it was a couple of years ago. And we can expect to see more and more of them if the code allows them. I've heard the argument from some council members that the citywide cap will eventually cause vacation rentals to become more spread out through the city. That argument fails on numerous grounds. If a significant percentage of the hundred or so allowed new rentals are placed in this neighborhood. That will have made a major impact before the cap has even been reached. The damage will already have been done. The only way that the citywide cap would result in spreading out the density would be if approved properties were sold. And the properties outside the area were higher up on the waiting list. One problem with this logic is that it could take many years before a property owner would sell a vacation rental. Especially when that approval ends, once the house is sold. The other problem is that it's reasonable to expect that there will be other properties in this area that are already on the list. I think it's significant that there were a number of people who provided written testimony with clear objections to the lack of a density cap. I urge the council to take their testimony very seriously. Clearly, they care about their neighborhoods. I've heard concerns about how a density cap would be restrictive on property owner rights. Such a cap would be no different in this regard from the citywide cap that the council seems to favor. I hope the council will recognize the problem that a lack of a density cap will create, agree that such a cap is needed. And ask staff to come back with various recommendations about appropriate density restrictions throughout the city. My second issue has to do with the change from a conditional use to a special use. My concerns are how a single person will be making such an important decision to approve a vacation rental. The lack of transparency about such decisions and ignoring the impact on the neighborhood. As a special use, the director or designee will make the decision of approval. There would be no public hearing and only written testimony would be accepted. I've shown most of you how such decisions in the past have ignored public testimony and been made with bad data. At least if it was is kept with the planning commission, it takes only one of the eight members to recognize the testimony and to have it discussed. Under the conditional use rules, one of the requirements is that the applicant must show that there will be minimal impact on neighborhood livability. That goes away with the change to a special use. I think it is a poor change to minimize public input, input, to have the decision process in private and to not allow consideration of neighborhood impact. I hope the council will recognize these serious issues and keep the process as a conditional use. Last is the less important issue of requiring that the owner or manager live within forty miles. I have pointed out that there's no requirement of any sort that this person be at all accessible. There's no timeframe for resolving issues, let alone even being available to hear what those issues are. It has been mentioned that if the manager isn't responsive enough, that could result in a complaint and that could address get addressed by the city. The problem is that without any requirement for this person to be responsive, the city has no authority to require it. The unresponsive manager isn't violating any any rules, leaving the city with no option to push them to be more responsive. I suggest that if the council wants this requirement to have any value at all, something should be added with regard to how quickly the manager needs to respond and to address the issue. Otherwise, I see no reason at all to have a toothless requirement such as is proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. All right. We can talk about anything you want on on this list, but just for simplicity sake, can we deal with the what did you call it? One, one time issue?
I think that's a fine name for a mayor who has that one.
So let's talk about that first, make a decision on that, then we can back up and and look over the other information. Robin?
I need a little more clarification on this. Does it pertain? Who are we mainly trying to protect? Is is this if I own a rental and I want to sell it? The next person can get it or is it upon my death, my kids would inherit? Is that what we're trying to achieve here or? I'm confused.
Do you do you want to take the conceptual and I'll take the there's wordsmithing or legal?
So currently in the conditional use code. Unless a permit prohibits it, a conditional use may be transferred or set to a a contract purchaser. And that is a distinction between the special use permit, so R three, R four, commercial zones. Where that applicant and a special use approval runs with the applicant and if they were to change, it it stops.
So if we were to change it to special use, that would not be an issue at all. If I sold it, it would my kids couldn't inherit it, it's done.
Well, so so part of of that issue is the distinction between the conditional use permits that have already been issued and moving forward. If they all went to special use, then yes, they would all run with the applicant. And so part of the discussion at the work session revolved around trying to transition the kind of whole body of permits to that run with the applicant model while giving the ability of if somebody received a permit with the expectation of being able to transfer it. Does that impact, you know, their the value of that permit? And so the proposed language was attempting to give that current permit holder the ability to transfer it at that they received when they were approved, but then having that switch to a applicant based, once they've realized that that right. And the conversation with James then has revolved around if that one time burn conflicts with the conditional use permit language, just granting that right unless prohibited at the permit stage. And then I'll let James add any other comment.
Yeah, and I think that's 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 what the wordsmith thing would be intended to do. And that's why if council wants to kind of run with that concept or continue to run with the concept to provide that that flexibility for the current conditional use permit holder. We want to do some tweaks to sync that up with the way that it's set up in other parts of the code for conditional use permits.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand. So right now, if all the rentals have conditional uses, so the way it is now, they would be able to transfer it. But we could write new language that would make it non-transferable. Is that, that's basically what you're saying, right?
Right now, the majority of them do. I wouldn't say they all do because there are some R three, R four or commercial use term. So the majority of them have that provision. And so yes, this would be thinking about a lot of ways. provision. And so yes, this would be, um, thinking about, you know, a, a lot of way to allow them to realize that, that transfer that they might have. You know, built into why they got it. Um. I think Scott might also have a comment to add.
No, I, Councilor Wheelie, the other question or concern I thought I heard you express is whether those rights, uh, could be inherited or, or how this affects the survivorship and, and the way this is structured. It doesn't matter if you were originally approved as a special use permit or a conditional use permit. Or you're later approved under this new code as a special use permit. You would have the ability to transfer that your heirs could inherit it. They could, they could continue to operate. It wouldn't. It wouldn't be a sale or a transfer of the property as it's defined in this, in this ordinance.
So basically we would get to decide if we want, we would kind of be, so they bought it knowing it was conditional. That they could transfer it to the next owner or whatever, but we could say no more. We have that option. That's what this is about, correct?
That's, I think, what the conversation with legal about the, the language of that is about. And then that, that happening, if you, if council would like to continue that as a, like.
If I may, and so this draft language came about from the council's prior work session where you had expressed an interest in looking at some strategy that would either set a an expiration date for these existing conditional use permits. Or would limit them in some way. And so this was a staff initiated proposal to limit them, provide certainty for the existing owners, provide a definite termination date. Uh, that would then free up those spots, so to speak, within the cap.
I think the rationale we, uh, behind our idea of the first sale of, of a rental property to a new owner and letting the permit, the use, special use go with the property was in case somebody bought it thinking that's what they were investing in and when they got tired of being a landlord. Then they could sell it as a rental property to someone else. So if that's right, I think that one time burn, whatever you're calling it, makes sense. There, I, there may be better arguments against doing that, but it seems to make sense to me.
Uh, I for one like the proposed changes to, um, fifteen, four forty-five through thirty. The limited one time transfer language and I would prefer that and went back to you to clean that up and bring it back to us. That's my preference.
I'm where, I'm where Counselor Carmen's at.
Same, I agree.
Make sure I understand. You're saying that you do want to give them the one time burn and you want to bring, and bring it back. Okay, got it. Yes, Robin?
I think, and Peggy, correct me, I think what we were, if we did a cap and a homeowner had the house. We were thinking and the, and they, and the, it transfers, if they had a conditional use and the home transfers to another operator, but that person was not wanting to market it as a short term rental, then we've got a house that's been approved and it's taking up space from other um, people who wanted to have a short term rental. So that's kind of the thinking. If we did a cap, so we've got, you know, ten homes, we've met the cap and none of them are, you know, using their house as a rental. I think that's what we were thinking, that it would, would not keep going. Correct? Yeah. So the burn thing would not solve this problem.
There is, if I may, um, Counselor Wheelie, Mayor, and I, and James, correct me if I'm wrong, but in order to maintain your vested right to operate. You have to register, you have to maintain your registration, which means renewing, maintaining your business license, being, well, you wouldn't have any transient lodging taxes to pay. If you were not operating, but you still have that reporting responsibility, right? So as long as you're doing that, you can maintain that, that permit. But when you cease to operate within, for, for a year, for a year, then you're out of business.
All right, um, so it looks like we've, well, I guess we should vote on that. Is everybody in agreement that we do want to have the one time burn? And therefore we're going to ask the staff to bring this back to us at the next meeting, next available meeting for that. All in favor of that signify by saying aye. All opposed? Aye. All right. So now open game.
The one thing that I, I think we talked about in the previous work session that I don't think we had a proposed recommendation for staff to work through and Mr. Suppy brought up was the density concern and, um, I guess I would be curious if you've thought through that a little bit more and looked at neighboring cities and county land of counties that have this of, if you have any creative idea as to how we could incorporate some sort of density marker within our cap.
I think throughout the DCA project, so I've been kind of stemming from the white paper back in twenty twenty-three kind of I think there are definitely best practices of other jurisdictions using density caps in a variety of somewhat creative ways, being just kind of a X foot buffer or it, it can be, um, there are options where the type of approval changes based off of density. So if you have a vacation rental within five hundred feet, then it goes to planning commission. Where there are jurisdictions that look at the block and the percentage of the vacation rentals on the block. So there are a variety of kind of, of best practices that exist, um, I think, and were included in the original white pa- paper and some discussions with planning commission and the ad hoc committee. And so the code language coming out of, out of this and out of some of the public engagement and ad hoc committee recommendations. I think are intending to kind of follow that direction from council on cap, but there are certainly options that can be considered. I think the recommendations here are kind of based more on that process, recommendation, direction, uh, through that process.
Yeah, I agree. Um, just getting more public testimony, I think we do need to look at a density cap. Um, I mean, it's undeniable that our citizens want us to look into it. I have gotten you know, numerous emails. So I think if we ignore it, we would not be listening to our constituents. My concern is, you know, the citizens that their whole street are rentals. A neighborhood was not created, you know, to be solely rentals. I, I understand property rights and it does improve the character and it makes for a cleaner yard, but that's not what our neighborhoods were intended for. So I think we do need to look, I know, I, we didn't discuss this at our short term rental ad hoc committee, but our citizens are asking for it and I think we need to consider it.
I'm a little frustrated that we're having this particular discussion because, um, the council met and this considered the cap. The density cap as well. And I think for now we decided to just go with it, but we've also were clear that in two years or, in fact, I think it's one year after implementation, we wanted a report to see how it was going. And then two, every two years thereafter. So we, we will have an opportunity to look at the density cap as time goes by, but and we, and I remember people, I don't remember all the people who were fine with the density. In the neighborhood with short term rentals. So I, I'd be inclined to go with it just a flat cap for now and, and for sure, take a look at it next year and two years later.
Yeah, when this subject came up last time I asked about HOAs. I specifically said like my HOA, my neighborhood does not allow for short term rentals and as the city grows, and I don't know how many other HOAs are in the city that also prevent this. So as the city grows. That two percent rises, I have a fear that the, it'll be concentrated to the downtown core area. And so I, I feel like that, I wouldn't like that if I was living in the neighborhood and it just became a bunch of short term rentals.
And I agree with Peggy. I don't, I don't mean to rehash this. I know we had those conversations. I just do feel that and I don't even know where I stand if we're to open this up to talk about density, but I do remember Counselor Carmen bringing that up and I feel like we never really landed on the impact of HOAs and the concentration of frankly downtown and up college, North College. But I agree with, I think you're right, Counselor Kilburg. I think that as long as we have the one year ability to take a look at the data and where it's being, I, I'm comfortable with that. So I can let that rest, but I, I think you're right too, Robin, that we need to, we need to listen. So, um, I will let it go with everyone.
I, I know that there's been lots of opportunity for input. But I do agree with Robin. I feel like the more recently as we've gotten to this more public space, that we have gotten increasingly significant input around the density consideration. And I think I have really been thinking about the comment that Derek made at the last meeting and like at minimum, I would like for us to consider two percent of the total available housing versus two percent of the total, because I'm going to guess that Kalina Crossing probably will have an HOA. That's two hundred ish more homes. That likely would increase our total percentage, but not be eligible for the, would not be participants. So I think that it's important that we're mindful about how our city is growing. Um, and is it growing in a way? That's going to have a significant density impact on our downtown core just by default of what houses are eligible. So I would like to review the density both from that input that we've received recently, but from I think the really important comment that you had at our last meeting about the impact of our new communities and are they actually eligible for this two percent when we're counting them as part of the total?
I mean, I would also like to say this is a process. We've been working on it for nearly two years and, you know, we've been kind of going along, getting input and the closer we get to deciding is when people are, you know, really coming to us. So I feel, you know, no, we didn't want a density cap before, but I mean, I can't ignore public comment. I just can't. I don't, I don't think it would be wise if we waited a year. People want us to do something and I think if we ignored public comment, it would be. I, I don't, yeah, I would feel negative not listening to our constituents.
Well, I, I haven't gotten a lot of emails about it, but so I, I kind of am going along the same direction as, as you are, uh, Peggy on this and, and I, I think, you know, we ought to you know, let's get it in place and then let's take a look at it. I do agree, um, Derek, that you're, you know, the HOAs, we're going to need to really take a look at that in the mix of everything because there's quite a few in town. And, um, so, but I haven't had a I just haven't had a lot of negative input about it. So I'm kind of inclined to let's, let's move along with it. I do. I, I would like to see that this whole thing with the manager thing. I mean, I just think that that's kind of ridiculous. They don't have any way of really putting any teeth to it and if something happens, you know, the, the owner is going to be notified by either you know, the people that are renting it or property management. But I would like to, I, I kind of like to leave it at a conditional permit instead of a special. Only because I think it gives people the opportunity to at the, at the, uh, planning commission to be able to voice their opinions a little bit more than just have it go to planning director and if it meets all the criteria, it just gets passed. So that's kind of my feeling on it.
We certainly could reignite, uh, a session to discuss the density issue. The HOA point is well made. I would say however, that the city doesn't currently have a GIS layer that tracks HOA housing status with regard to this particular metric as far as I'm aware. So I think there would be some extra administrative burden to planning staff and maybe to GIS staff as well. To add a recording layer of some sort and, and perhaps even some legal exchanges between the city and HOAs to get responses to their covenants. And which is not to say that any of that is insurmountable. That can, that can all occur. I just wanted to highlight that there are some, definitely some moving parts there, folks.
Well. I think that we have, I think that a lot of people put a lot of work into preparing this document. I am sympathetic to the, uh, homeowner's association, um, argument, but I would like to remind everybody on council that, uh, the nature of our, of our neighborhoods has changed now with our current laws. You can have a high density project in your neighborhood, homeowner's association or not. Um, if your neighbor's house burns down, they can put basically anything they want to in there. So you know, very good argument, very good. But I don't know what the perfect solution is. And the thing that I remind, that, that I stated when we started this project was nobody was going to be happy with everything in this project. And I mean, nobody, because it's all a matter of compromise. Now, as far as the, uh, comments that we've gotten, I mean, let's not overblow it. There was three. That's not a significant portion of the population. We had more people than that involved in the process, uh, the whole way. Uh, when public comment was there, that was not a, an overriding issue. So I myself would like to go ahead and, uh, do like Derek suggested earlier and ask staff to bring this back with the changes that we made. I really don't want to try to relitigate this here at council. But if that's what you guys want to do, of course, that's what we'll do. If the majority of us agree, then so be it. So at this point, I'd like to call for questions. And, uh, so with the change that we made earlier. Shall we move forward with this project as it is and bring it back to council for final approval? Or shall we ask for some more revisions? Robin?
Um, if I was to accept it as it is and Peggy broke, brought up, we would revisit the possible density cap in a year? Is that how I unders- Is that, okay.
So if there's no more discussion, all in favor of passing it uh, with the changes that Derek made earlier, asking staff to bring us back with new wording for final approval next meeting? I'm sorry? Well, no, it was Derek's. Yes, you're right.
Well, it was Counselor Carmen's point, but I guess I, I, I just wanted to make sure we're not passing it. The, the thought would be not to pass it, but to direct staff to bring it, bring it back. Okay, I just, okay.
Derek?
Sorry, and just one last concern with waiting a year. I don't know what that means for additional approvals for say like Mr. Suppy's block. You know, within a year, how many more houses can go into one single neighborhood on one single block? I think it's easier to rein it in later than just, or not, I mean, examine it the other way around. So it's going to be harder to like if his block gets full with short term rentals to have those people, I mean, they'll be there.
So how do we want to proceed? Do we want to have staff bring us more information on density? You have a good point.
I'm sorry, that's what I would like to see. A combination maybe of the two percent and the density. I, I just, I feel like you're going to ruin neighborhoods. So that's what I would like to see. I just, I feel like you're going to ruin neighborhoods. So that's what I would like to see.
So now we're back to talk, so we are talking now about asking staff to come back with more information on density because of the HOA concerns we have and just doing it the right way from the gate? Okay. How do you feel about it councillor Kilburg? Well, my opinion, that was my opinion. That was my statement. That was my ask. So clearly I, that was what my initial recommendation was, but I understand Peggy's concern of that staff already suggested that they would come back in a year. And I don't think that a year is going to snag up all of the downtown which is not, I mean, in the terms of how many homes there are.
Make it, Mike. So this whole concept about it's going to ruin neighborhoods, I, you know, my neighborhood is a big neighborhood and it's an old neighborhood. I only know the two neighbors to the left of me. I know the neighbor to the right of me and I know the neighbor really well across the street. That's it. And I'm okay with that. I do, my wife and I take big walks through our neighborhood. So does lots of other people. As we walk by, we say hi. So this whole thing that you're going to ruin neighborhoods, I cannot wrap my head around it, councillors and 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 I I don't know other people that say that it's going to ruin the neighborhood. I I can't, I can't understand that because any home that is a short term rental that I've seen is in excellent shape. It's in great condition. It keeps your neighborhood values up because everything looks nice. Quite frankly, I wish I had a few in my neighborhood. I've got like two and it's probably a hundred or more homes there. So, so I I don't, I don't know. I don't want to diss what you're saying, Derek, but I I I I I I know, I know. I'm trying to understand where you're coming from, but I, I'm not getting there. And if somebody could give me some, some information somehow, the staff or whatever, I don't, I don't know. But that's kind of where I'm, it's, it's not like it was back and leave it to Beaver, you know? I just dated myself on that one, but. Hang on, you settled out for a minute.
You told me to settle out?
Well, yeah, I don't want the back and forth to get somebody else in there. Again, there's no reason to believe that just because we start this program differently today, this program's already going on. We're approving people. We have been for the entire time we've been on council. There's no reason to believe that just because we changed something, suddenly certain neighborhoods are going to fill up with vacation rentals. That's just not the way that the, the world works. We do have the safety net of revisiting this in a year. So anyway, Derek.
So there is two in my neighborhood now. It's a new neighborhood. It is a nice neighborhood intended for families. The ones that are rented are four bedroom homes. The one across the street is constantly rented. It's well maintained, but I have no idea. Like there's someone in there right now. I have no idea who it is. It's constant and that is housing stock being taken away from families. The person that bought it does not even live in this state. So people are buying homes intended for families here simply to generate income. And I know that's a private property right, but at the same time, I kind of have a problem and the house next door is for sale. Is that going to be another short term rental? I mean, I don't want three of them in my neighborhood. I don't, it's just odd. I'm telling you, it's just uncomfortable and it's odd. And when you've got whole streets, which we have had public comment numerous times that are all rentals, I just don't think that's okay. I don't. And to ignore it, I think would be, be doing a disservice to our constituents. And I mean, I think we should consider a density cap.
Might be repeating myself, but we've been working on this for a year and a half. We had no policies at all with regard to caps. So this is progress. We don't have to get to the perfect solution. And I will tell you, I have, I don't know of any vacation rentals in my neighborhood. And there are lots of those homes I would like to have become big rentals because at least their lawns would be mowed and their houses would be painted. So it's, it can play both ways. I think we're making progress. I think we will direct, ask staff to take a look at this and see where we're at in a year and we can make all the changes we want in a year. But I don't think everything's going to fill up during that time with short term rentals.
I would like to see staff bring us information on density. I don't want another short term rental in my neighborhood and that's a possibility. So I would like staff to bring us some information on that along with the conditional use. Because we've also had public comments about that. People are concerned that it's taking away transparency. So there's that.
On that issue, I, once again, when it goes as a type two review, the answer is always the same. People stand up in front of the planning commission and they tell you how bad, how it scares their dog. And they have to approve it because it meets the the regulations. So, I mean, Robin, you're you've been in this process right from the beginning and now suddenly you're, you're wanting to change it too. Uh, you know, that's fine. We will do whatever you guys want, but I believe that we are trying to make the perfect decision and there is no perfect decision. So how do you want to proceed? Somebody make a motion?
Yeah, I move we accept all the changes that were presented, that James presented tonight with the incorporation of this new language to clarify. And, and with the condition that staff take a look at this in one year and at least every two years after thereafter.
Can I ask for one, what? Can I ask for one amendment to her motion?
Second.
Okay. Um, can we just clarify a little more specifically on within a year, staff will bring back density specific information, including the overlay of the GIS system to hopefully do outreach to HOAs to understand what our true housing stock that would be incorporated within the two percent actually is in a year? Are you comfortable with that?
I want them to take a look at everything, that the revenue, the licensing, the
Me too. I'm just saying the additional component.
All of it, yeah.
Um, I think I would say administratively coming back in a year with a fully formed data package would be the, what the staff could commit to. That might involve also reaching out to HOAs. But it would involve probably a great many other things that are not thought of at this moment because obviously it, having taken this long to get to this point, we'd have to look at everything. So it's, it's in a very widest sense.
All right. So we have a motion to would make the one change that cited by the, by James. And other than that, pass this the way that it is, bring it back to us next time for approval. Is that?
Excuse me, Mayor Rosacker. We need to vote on the, or see if there's a second and then potentially vote on the amendment before we can pass that.
It never sounded like an amendment to me. That sounded like discussion and it was appropriate for the time.
She, it wasn't called an amendment, so.
Do you want to state the amendment again?
To include density specific, all of the items that would be brought back with specifically reaching out to HOAs, like doing proactive outreach during this year period to understand the true housing stock that is within the two percent.
I got it.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question of the, of councillor Kilburg? Is your intent that the conditional use, what do we call it, one time burn, that that is part of what we will be coming back with? Or did you want that out because the language that the city attorney had drafted was for the event that you didn't want that one time?
Yeah, you got it backwards, but yes, that is the intent, everybody, right?
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify?
Yes.
Um, so, so that language would in substance be also adopted in both cases. There would be a little bit of, a little bit of wordsmithing to incorporate the one time burn as needed into that paragraph. But the paragraph that was passed around encompasses a, a change that staff is recommending in general. So kind of that, that amendment on its own and then the one time burn being finalized with James prior to next meeting as part of that.
It's all housekeeping on the language.
Do you want to, you want to restate while we're voting on, please?
Yes. So first we'd start with the amendment proposed by Elise, if there's a second. You need to know that. Yeah. So the, when the amendment's on the table, you need to resolve that first. So.
Good point. Elise made an amendment. Does anybody want to second it?
Yeah, I can.
What's that?
I'll have a swing at the amendment. I think it was to do a proactive outreach to come back in one year with density data to include research on HOA rules, information, potentially leading to an update to the GIS layer.
Hey, that is the amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of that amendment signify by saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right. So now we have the original bill. Are you ready?
Yes, motion as amended now. Yes. So the motion as amended is to move to accept the changes presented with the condition that staff review in one year and two year, and then every two years following that with amendment that within the next year with the amendment just passed. We'll say it that way. There we go.
All in favor of that signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Thank you. All right. Now we have the work session for the economic opportunity analysis. Is that you still, James?
He get me three times the night, so.
I, I tried to tell him no and he said, nope, pile it on.
All right. So, but these next two are shorter, so fingers crossed. So moving on to the economic opportunities analysis. So this is picking back up from some conversations that most of us had a yearish ago. And so there is, should be a little bit of refresher and then a little bit of overview as well. Um, so this discussion is supporting goal two, identifying industrial land and attracting employers to encourage kind of wage jobs, working to bring land into the urban growth boundary zone for light manufacturing within five years. So as many of you know, between 2019 and 2021, the city engaged in a suite of long range land need planning, including a housing needs analysis, housing production strategy, economic opportunities analysis and public, having public land needs study. This work looked at forecasted population growth, associated land need for residential employment and public purposes. And the city's existing land supply and ability to provide adequate, adequate land within the UGB. The analysis is incorporated into the city's comprehensive plan and can be the first step for a potential UGB amendment. Um, the EOA as part of it was funded by the LCD grant and was accepted by the council in 2021. The LCD came back to the city and required that analysis to be adopted by ordinance. And in 2024, the city entered the sequential UGB review process, which allowed the city to approve one step of that UGB amendment at a time. Council then directed staff to withdraw from that process, request that the LCD allow us to conduct the housing element in 2027 and 2028 and proceed with the EOA. DL's, DLCD approved that schedule for the housing and now it's a housing capacity analysis and associate housing broken strategy. Um, and so you'll be hearing about that next meeting from Leanne. And indicated that the city could continue adopting the EOA through the existing post acknowledgement plan amendments um, using the 2020 population projections in that EOA. So the EOA evaluates long term employment land by looking at factors that affect future growth, employment growth and site needs, connecting buildable lands inventory and reconciling land sufficiency for the projected growth. Um, the 2021 EOA projects that between 2021 and 2041, the city will see an increase in approximately forty four hundred employees going from just over fourteen thousand to approximately eighteen thousand four hundred. Here you can see the EOA's employment buildable lands inventory, which it, it looks mostly at sites in East Newburgh along ninety nine up in the Springbrook district and then down around the mill site. The EOA looks at both commercial and industrial uses and estimates that the city has an excess of twenty one acres of commercial land. And the analysis also looked at industrial need by site size, partially by comparing industrial industrial needs to comparable cities in the region and identified a need of a hundred and fifty two acres of industrial land across a range of site sizes from less than five acres up to twenty five to fifty acres. So the next step in the process would be adopting the EOA into the comprehensive plans, land supply and need chapter, which could then be the basis for a UGB amendment for employment lands. So that's all the slides I have and probably the work session is just for any questions, kind of refresher. Um, and then we can also do it, do any, any other further research prior to a tentative, uh, the EOA adoption is tentatively on the forward looking calendar for August. But that would obviously be pending council's decisions. So if there are any questions, happy to answer and then also happy to bring back more information at the adoption here.
What work still needs to be done? I mean, that looked like the completed document. What?
So, so yeah, so the, the analysis document was completed in 2021 based on those twenty twenty projections. And so the next step is incorporating it into the comprehensive plan. Back in 2021, in some of the attachments, council accepted them by resolution. But the LCD came back and said that they needed to be adopted by ordinance. And so there was an effort to adopt the H and the housing part, the employment part and the public land part by ordinance. I believe in 2022 maybe, but that got put on hold. And then we had the sequential process a little year and a half ago, maybe, uh, which would have kind of combined the adoption with the urban growth boundary change itself. And that's where we decoupled them and had the housing part be updated in 2027 with new data and move forward with the EOA. So the next step will be, will be adopting the, adopting this data that's been completed into the comprehensive plan. And then council would consider whether or not to pursue an urban growth boundary amendment based off of that data, once it's in the comprehensive plan and not just a separate document that is pretty, but isn't adopted.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is a deannexation discussion.
So staff recently held a pre-application meeting with the book vista about some development in southeast Newburgh. Which we'll kind of go over a quick summary, I guess, first, should we, introduction and then move forward.
Uh, Mark Wilkens with Del Boca Vista, twenty-one, seven hundred, Northeast White Horse Drive, Dundee.
All right, so um, council goals that this looks at is council to, goal to implementing a careful and prudent fiscal policy. Looking at long-term financial planning, uh, and then also the continuous goal E of strategic planning and growth with taxing districts. Um, and staff's recommendation is to discuss the property owners or applicants' request, DAnx eighteen twenty-eight and eighteen thirty-five waterfront street. No action is requested at this time, as the city has not yet received an application. Um, it's more just. Looking for direction from council on some of the trade-offs and if it's something um, that staff uh, should pursue with the applicant. Um, so CBB held a pre-application meeting regarding the development of single-family dwellings and a stores facility. And the potential deannexation, the properties were annexed in two thousand and six, and the sites are zoned R-two medium-density residential. And in the riverfront overlay district and contain significant area of stream corridor overlay and areas of special flood hazard. And the, the three parcels are approximately twenty, two-point-three and five acres in size. Um, so here you can see the three parcels, two north of the bypass and one to the south, and then the image, the map on the right. Um, shows the uh, both the, the flood hazard overlay in red and then the stream corridor overlay in blue. So that's the, kind of the extent of those, um, which e- each of those have a variety of. Variety of restrictions on development, both on the building side and on the planning side. Um, the process for deannexation would uh, be that council adopts a resolution initiating the withdrawal of the territory. Um, holds a public hearing no later than thirty days after that adoption, then considers um, an ordinance on the withdrawal. And then holds a final public hearing and then declares that the territory is annexed. We would be coordinating with Yango County and initial, and discussions with the planning department have indicated that the sites could revert to previous county zoning. Prior to that two thousand and six annexation. The withdrawn areas would remain subject to any bondage or other indebtedness that exists at the time of the annexation. Um, and then also the sites are within the urban renewal area, and that would require a minor amendment and approval. By the Newburgh Urban Renewal Agency by resolution. Um, and there you can see the, the sites just kind of at the curve of the city limits and urban growth boundary there. Um, in the two riverfront districts, uh, and the assessed values at that time were just under a hundred thousand dollars. Um, the other quirk is Senate Bill fifteen thirty-seven from twenty twenty-four, which we have discussed previously. Regarding the one-time UGB expansion for affordable housing, where the city could. Um, develop a concept plan with an applicant and, and expand up to a hundred acres. Um, of eligible land for affordable housing purposes. If the deannexation is approved, staff would recommend uh, amending the UGB. As if the land is developed at county-level densities, but is still within the city's uh, land supply. For example, for the housing planning that will happen in twenty twenty-seven, that kind of limits the kind of housing potential of those sites. If they're say developed with the three single-family houses, but are thirty acres of medium-density residential is kind of a mismatch there. Apart from the, the one-hundred-acre one-time expansion, Senate Bill fifteen thirty-seven also provides for a land swap. And so in lieu of that one-hundred acres, the city could choose to swap residential land for. Similarly, or greater density level residential land. Um, and would forego the ability to do that hundred-acre swap. But if the deannexation and subsequent urban growth boundary change went through. The city could remove the approximately thirty acres from the southeast in that constrained area. And then add thirty acres of medium-density residential land elsewhere. Um, the swap areas must be roughly equivalent in size, must be zoned for, for residential uses. And have to be at the same or greater density. So i- i- if this was an option that council wanted to pursue, there would be a pathway um, to kind of make up for that. Residential land elsewhere in the city. Um, there are a variety of trade-offs, one of which being the site being in the. Urban renewal area, so I'm kind of thinking about if the um, tax uh, increases and tax base of that. Storage unit or single-family um, dwellings would uh, kind of uh. Realize what the plan might have assumed would happen there. Um, so that's one um, trade-off, and then also. If the land swap happened, that would, you know, be in lieu of that larger one-hundred acres. And we also need to find a applicant to be that other part of the swap. Um, we have sent out the mailers to inquire about the hundred-acre larger one-time, and we'll, we'll, we'll be. Coming back to you guys with that uh, info if it's, if, if there's interest, but likely if this also went through. We would do a similar inquiry to see if there was thirty acres that wanted to come in that could balance off the deannexation. And with that, I'll turn it over.
James, if I might just add, and so the land swap does not have the housing affordability requirements tied to it. As the other, uh, up to a hundred acres of one-time only, does require a percentage of affordable housing on it. So it's a lot of, this is a lot of work, a lot of effort to go through, but we, when we meet with customers and applicants, prospective applicants. We try to find potentially a win-win. There may or may not be a win-win here, that's for you to judge. Um, but we wanted to bring this before you, before the prospective applicant and the city went through a lot of effort. To, to realize what might be a benefit to the city, so.
And again, no decision on, on a type more just asking about interest in pursuing with the app, so.
Uh, this property originally, uh, well, it still is owned by a, a longtime Newburgh family. They've probably been here since the forties, I would guess, and I know that because they're um, shirt-tail relatives of ours. Uh, their plan originally was to farm it and keep farming it, knowing that the city was coming out that way. Uh, so uh, once the bypass came, it took the heart out of their property. And it just left these two remnant pieces. Uh, these pieces cannot be developed to city standards. We've met with staff and talked about uh, you know, sewer issues and um, fire and all that kind of stuff. Roads, you know, they're, they're just real tight with the way the property falls off. Uh, so we came up with the idea, if we were to deannex it, uh, you know, what could we do with it? Uh, I've talked with uh, Yango County Planning Director, and he said that uh, he'll work with us on this, he thinks it makes sense. Uh, our plan on the, the larger piece on the, called the south side of the bypass. Is we're, we're sure we can get one house, and we would put a well and a septic in. Uh, we're gonna try and get two, possibly three, but I know we can, you know, there's room for one. Uh, the south side of the, or the north side, uh, it's hard to see on the map, but uh. It's really tight getting into that parcel. It drops off, there's a, a literally a cliff that is. I don't know, fifty feet or whatever. Um, it used to be a nut drying plant for their orchard, they used to have an orchard here. It's no longer in use. Um, again, we can't develop it to city standards. Uh, so we thought, you know, what can we do with that? It's extremely noisy there with the bypass, the way it sits up above the bypass. I mean, it's, if you go out there and talk, it's, you actually have to talk in loud voice. To hear each other. So our thought originally was, you know, maybe, and we're not planning on doing this. But we're just coming up with ideas to help get the property sold for them. Uh, possible storage units, uh, the river-run subdivision, as you know, uh. Doesn't have a lot of uh, parking for RVs or that kind of thing, so we thought, well, this might go good with that. We've since talked to uh, about uh, an auto repair shop or some small deal like that. Uh, I think any noise that uh, the light industrial zone would create would be drowneded out by the bypass noise. So that's, that's our plan. Um, if you guys are for that, I think it gets undeveloped, both ground. Uh, out of the, the city limits, where it could go somewhere else to expand the city. Um, but again, the county, we'll probably be asking the county for a, a VLDR two and a half on the south side. Just, problem is, we can't do more than one or two lots, but we have to have enough to uh. Acreage, so it'll probably be like a, one or two lots that are twenty-four acres and the other. Or if we get two, two twelve-acre lots, something like that, so it's, it's not going to um, develop. You know, very intense at all. So that's kind of what we're doing, we're, we're trying to help these people. I mean, right now it's just remnants that can't be developed.
I have lots of questions. Um, it's not quite making sense yet, but can you, so I drove out there, I looked at it. So when you say it doesn't meet city standards, is that your main, what does that mean?
Uh, we can't, like, right now it's zoned R-two, but we can't sewer it. Because the uh, it drops down, we can't, we can't get it to go uphill. Um, yeah, we can't meet the, the fire, the, the fire code, the way I understand it is stricter in city limits. Than it is in the county. And waters further away, um, it's, that we can't get enough uh. Area to put in a street to city standards, because then we're taking out of the actual building that below, so that's. I mean, if we could do it to city standards, we would much rather do a fifty-lot subdivision there.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to keep the parcels in the city. Um, it's tough, because I know you want to do something with it. It's, it just seems a shame that we would have to deannex property like.
Uh, one thing that we'd like to do is, I mean, this is one step, but if it's approved, we want to go out and find, like James said. Thirty acres somewhere there that can be developed, uh, and annexed that, and that's part of our thinking.
So if we deannex it, that would allow you guys to go find other land, is that what you're saying?
So the, the deannexation would be separate from the UGB land swap. But could facilitate, like, if it was the annex, then we would move the, the UGB like uh, boundary could be moved and facilitated. So they're not inherently connected. Um, the staff's recommendation would be that in considering this. Like, without the land swap, there, you know, that changes the trade-offs than having the land swap as a. Kind of partner piece, if that were to, were to move.
Yeah, we originally came in asking if, it's, we leave it in the city, if we can do wells and septics, uh, and that kind of stuff. But uh, doesn't sound like that's an option.
No, I think uh, from the pre-app, uh, engineering had uh, in- included that a lift station would be required. For the sewer, um, that those wouldn't be an option.
So, I, I'm not an engineer, although I increasingly play one on television. Um, you can definitely, with sufficient expenditure, get water into that location. You can also get sewage out of that location with an expensive lift station. So it is, it is to say, to make the generalization cannot be done to city standard. The sentence would actually, should actually be, it would be very expensive to get it done to city standard.
I'm sure nobody knows the answer to this, but why did this get included in the urban renewal district if it was not land that was suitable for a building?
What happened was the original sellers, since they were planning on keeping it until it came into the city limits. Uh, they, like I said, they've held it since the forties. Uh, they're, they've since died and their kids own it. Uh, when the bypass came in, that was going to be valued at uh, county property in that zoning. Uh, which is substantially lower than, you know, what it would be worth if it was all annexed in. So the, the ODOT came and took the, the heart of the property out, and we negotiated a deal with ODOT where, you know, they bought that. Uh, and these remnants just got left over. They were all part of the same tax lots that got annexed in. This was, oh, you know, you could, they farmed all across there, and now to get from their property over here, they gotta go all the way out. To South College and come all the way back in to get to this piece. And right now it's just overgrown, it's, it's uh, you know, there's. I don't, I don't see what anyone's going to do with it. Uh, I, I don't see anyone spending the kind of money to. Put in a lift station for, you know, one lot or two lots or.
Well, I have a question for Scott. Uh, I know not, irregardless of the time. What would the expense be of taking us outs- out of the urban renewal district? We'd have to redraw property lines and several things.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a capital-intensive process, it's a labor-intensive, and it's the number of meetings that you and. Um, and the staff will need to do, to do the paperwork and um, possibly some surveyor assistance in that area. That the applicant might be able to help with as well. So I didn't, I don't mean to over uh. Emphasize the amount of work, it is work and it's time, it's staff time. But it is consistent with, I think, this council's goal, uh, for some time to realize land for housing. Although that's not an express goal this year, it's something that you have prioritized in the past, and so that's why we're looking at this.
Would this create any islands by taking this property off of that? Are we gonna create a, an island or a peninsula in our city?
No, so, so the current UGB, which is the, it's, it's hard to see on that second map, oh. Yeah, so okay, if you go, if you go to the second map, or. So kind of the curvy, oh yeah, so I mean, on that one, so kind of the two parcels are at that boundary, kind of uh, on the curve. So, you know, it wouldn't be, you know, doing the, it wouldn't be creating any of the islands. Um, I think as far as the UGB expansion to swap, most of the islands in the city are of the city limits. But are already within the urban growth boundary, so for that added area, we'd likely be, be looking at expanding along the outside. Rather than filling in, because those are already in the UGB, just aren't annexed in, so that would kind of be that swap. Location.
So James, do I understand you correctly that a, a swap for UGB land would make it more attractive to the city? To deannex this? Is that too strong?
I think doing it without the swap is, there's greater trade, I, I think the swap allows. There to be some compensating, you know, there, um, you know, the, the, the tax base of that increase. Of that new area could happen, and then if that develops at that medium-density residential, that, you know, could increase. And I think, I think there are trade-offs to in the urban renewal district, how the assessed values. Already been factored into certain things, and so that might depend, you know, if it does, the city look for a land swap that's also in the urban renewal area. To try and compensate, so I think there, there's a variety of factors there.
So this, this land we're talking about is currently in the urban renewal district?
Yeah, so.
And so we have how many, twenty-eight years where there would be no uh, taxes collected?
So.
From the property?
So the south parcel is in, I believe it's in zone B. The, the north parcels are in riverfront, the subarea C, and the south parcel is in riverfront, subarea B. And the twenty twenty-four assessed values were just under a hundred thousand, so. Don't want to, you know, get over how that grew exactly into the uh, plan, but. But I think kind of thinking about the limited development potential might, I may defer elsewhere for.
Yeah, they're, they're assessed, you, you'd said they're assessed about a hundred thousand dollars a year. If they just remain fallow, three percent appreciation a year, assessed value, that's, you know, based on the mill rate, it's, it's not very much. So I think the value proposition is if, and we're meeting, this is a developer, there could be other prospective developers who would bring, you know, land or, uh, bring, and a land swap opportunity to the city, we would essentially have thirty acres in the bank that we could swap, that we could.
And if that were developed in a way that wasn't constrained like these sites, that, you know, that.
Yeah, realize the maximum planned density for those lands and assessed value.
Which may or may not impact the Nura, depending on where that land is located. Cause I think I asked Scott, we'll sing earlier. So the, on the Nura side, it would require a minor amendment, which would, which would go to the Nura Board, wouldn't go back to the full taxing districts as the original plan did. That we touch base with legal and, and that was kind of the, the selling point there is, um, because it impacts the, the financing and funding, it would likely go to the board to be approved, but doesn't need to go back to all the taxing districts, and go through that entire approval process. And so when that happens, the board could remove that area or add support, you know. I think depending on, on how set the land swap is, if it's someplace that Nura would want to consider, expanding the boundary to include the new thirty acres, that's, that's an option. Or if it's up north, then that might not be an option.
I would be, I would be open to, cause we're, you're, you're asking us if we're open to the discussion, right? And yes, I would be open to it. And I think that the value proposition could be in our favor if we explore, all the things we're talking about. So I would be in favor of it.
Um, I just have a couple of questions and forgive me, one of these questions I don't know how to ask gracefully, so I'm just gonna throw it out there. And I apologize in advance. So one was the lift station. I think we answered that. Um, I went to, it was a few months ago, it was like a river access presentation thing. And they had like a lovely piece of property that I think borders this, but one of the concerns that they had about, utilizing that property from like a recreation standpoint was safe road access. I'm curious, if as part of this project you're talking about, if you would do the ninety-nine updates to safely be able to access the property? Um, cause that was the barrier to the property, was the significant risk to utilizing based on an access standpoint. So I'm curious about that. The other question that I have, um, and this is one I really don't know how to ask gracefully, so I'm just gonna throw it out there. So you are here first, so to speak, with this thirty acres identified that you then want to swap, and we can do a total of a hundred acres. Does, do both of us to like, get like first right to the thirty acres that they can find to develop? Or is there some sort of like fairness bidding process, or do you just get to develop it because you're here first?
Oh, so, so similarly, we'd have to have the, the de-annexation i- is kind of separate from the, the U G B swap. So the up to a hundred acres would be a, a different process than the U G B swap. And so, um, I think the, the swap isn't necessarily limited to thirty acres. That number is just here because that's the area that's proposed. If the hundred acre U G B expansion was pursued, if there was some property owner who was adjacent to the current U G B and either in the urban reserve or in a non-resourced land, then the, the Senate bill provides a pretty robust framework of there's a solicitation by, by the city, depending on, on the size, there's concept planning, there's transportation planning, affordability limits. And this second option is included in the bill more as an alternative, so it doesn't have those, process pieces built in. Um, I think I'll, I'll tag Scott here if he, if he has any thoughts. But I'd imagine that council could set the framework for how that U G B swap is proposed. But the fact that the local would be de-annexing here doesn't have any sort of connection to, and I mean, they might propose a, a, a land swap and then, I mean, council could consider if that is what they wanted to do the swap with. But they're just the half of it, and then they could be the other half or somebody else that.
And not that I'm opposed, I was just curious.
That's part of the reason why we're buying it, uh, is the opportunity to find a place to swap. And so if, if we're not able to find another place to swap and purchase, it's not as attractive to us. Let me just be transparent.
Can I ask one more question? And this is more of a, like a general proxy, maybe a question for Will. One of the first topics we talked about, you mentioned that our new water plant is now off the table due to cost. Potentially, how many more medium density neighborhoods can we build based on our current water facility? Or are we gonna like run out of water?
So there were many, there are many, um, projection lines that came off of where we first did our analysis, beginning from about two and a half years ago. And based upon the concept of two hundred units per year, we were looking like we were gonna get into trouble in the mid twenty thirties. So we've got a bit of time, but you don't build a water plant overnight. So we'd want to be looking at getting that spun up, twenty thirty-two or something like that, getting it really going to be safe. Now, of course, we're gonna keep looking at the water consumption statistics and we're gonna keep analyzing that and make sure, where that trend is going. But, yeah.
I have a question for you. There's a, the piece of land to the east of that, that cuts into that, that kind of a square piece in there. Who, who belongs to that and, and how could that work with this project to make?
Our real estate company was approached by that. And, uh, at the end of the day, uh, we determined that, it's worth more as just a house on four acres than to try and develop it. The house is too nice to demo. Uh, you, it's got the same problems we do. Once you get a little bit back off the building pad, it just drops down into the flood plain. Right, yeah. And then part of what we've talked to is, uh, in the years when we were doing, dealing with ODOT, uh, CPRD would like, uh, us to donate, some property down by the river for the trail that they've been wanting to build. So that's something that, that we would agree to.
Well, I, I for one, would not oppose a land swap. Because that obviously keeps some more land inside the urban, or, yeah. But that's on you. You'd have to, you'd have to find a property, then approach us and try to do both processes at the same time.
Yeah, and I think what we would do is sit down with James and say, what, what part of the city do you want us to go look for this land swap and, and go from there?
Um, so, I guess, you know, what I, I don't like the idea of unwinding the, urban renewal district, which I opposed in the first place. Um, but, uh, it is not a good piece of property to build anything on. And, uh, if you could find another piece of property that would suit us better, I think I could support that. It looks like you're getting a lot of head nods. I don't know about Jerry over there, but. So, that answer, that answer your question?
Okay.
And also I would like to remind you that you'd be responsible for all the costs of, taking as, you know, of unwinding this deal. That, right Scott?
Yeah, we'll work with Will and the finance director to make sure that we're cost recovery on this effort.
Okay, while I'm here, let's change the subject. Uh, we've decided to, uh, pursue some of this, uh, affordable housing, things that have come up lately. Uh, we've tied up three properties. We closed on one. The other two just don't work. Uh, I think the council is in the right direction, looking for this. But if anyone would ever want to meet and talk about, uh, the, what's killing us, we've had to, we terminated two of them, just cause we can't meet city code and the regulations and the red tape. Uh, and I don't know if, if there's any flexibility and that kind of stuff, but, uh, to really take advantage, you know, we're planning on doing eight hundred and ninety square foot homes and, and trying to, uh, I think we were, we're hoping we were gonna do twenty-five lots, but now we're down to three. Uh, but I'd be happy to let you know of the issues that we're seeing out in the field. Uh, so that's another subject for a different day, I guess. But, yes.
All right, we're, uh, going to have a, an executive meeting, but before we do that, we're gonna need to take a, uh, a break here, and, uh, take care of some business with the urban renewal district, urban, yeah, urban renewal district, Nura. Uh, so at this point, we'll take a break and Derek, it's on you.
All right, well, this will be the Newburgh Urban Renewal Agency meeting for July seventh, twenty twenty-five. I call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please, Rachel?
Sure, Councilor McBride.
Here.
Councilor Wheatley.
Here.
Councilor Arno Holloman.
Here.
Councilor Kilburg.
Here.
Mayor Rosacker.
Here.
Councilor Turgason.
Here.
And Councilor Carmen.
Here. So committee business, we're here to talk about resolution twenty twenty-five fifteen of financing I G A with the city of Newburgh, for River Street repair funding. I believe it's administrator worthy.
Thank you, Chair Carmen. The item in front of us is authorizing the chair and the city manager to execute a new I G A between the city and Nura, to allow for the development of financing instrument for River Street improvement. Executive summary, in previous Nura C A C sessions and Newburgh City Council sessions, the River Street Capital Improvement Project was examined. The Nura Administrator and Finance Director of the City of Newburgh indicated that the current re- tax increment funding growth, currently slightly less than four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, um, even if we don't take that piece out, it would be at least a decade before Nura projects like River Street Improvement could occur. The option of continuing to do spot repairs was discussed, and the consensus was that that sort of interim work might be throwing money away in a sense, because the road still needs a full depth improvement. Executing the attached I G A so skillfully developed by my colleague would facilitate work on River Street with dispatch. The funding model would have the city secure the debt, but would have Nura pay the debt with tax increment financing. The city would dedicate S T C funds to the project to create a maximum pool of twelve point six million, as described previously. A motion to the effect could be made to support this particular resolution, and then facilitate creating an I G A.
Thank you. I'm assuming there's probably no questions for Mr. Worthy. So would someone like to make a motion?
Um, I move we support resolution twenty twenty-five fifteen. Financing, a financing I G A with city, with the city of Newburgh for River Street repair funding.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifteen. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Excuse me, did Mayor Rosacker vote? Didn't see a, okay, I used a aye.
All right, meeting's adjourned.
Okay. We are gonna take a break here in a minute, but let me go ahead and make this announcement so we can adjourn to the, uh, other room. We are going to have an executive session. The Newburgh City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon revised statutes one nine two to point six six zero two E, which allows the council to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representative of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representative, the, the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose, any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. So at this point, we'll, uh, take a short recess and then reopen an executive session. All right, shall we come back to order at least? Do you, do you have a motion to make?
Make a motion. I, um, move that we move into, real estate property negotiations away from staff and towards Miller Nash with our current offer on the table.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we ask Miller Nash to move forward with the, uh, property transaction, letter of M O, or a M O U. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Nay. All right. Um, I noticed lately that several counselors are on their phones during the meetings. And I just want to remind you that if those are your personal phones, you are opening them up for public records inspection. If anybody from the public, uh, would request that, and in fact, we'll talk to Rachel if you have any questions. All right, everybody. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.